Hey Barbara, can you hear me?
I can hear you Jeff.
Thanks Greg.
Can you guys hear us?
Six thirty six, thirty five?
I got thirty six, whatever you want to. All those in favor coming out of the executive session, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, okay, first item of business is organizational. Clerk administers the oath of office to council select. We have two counselors that are going to be sworn this evening but unable to attend in person, so we're gonna do it via the video link.
Well said, so Jeff and Jessica, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you want to unmute yourselves? I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
A the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The United States.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Town Counselor.
The duties of the Office of Town Counselor.
Tax Assessor.
Tax Assessor.
Overseer of the Board.
Overseer of the Board.
Thank you and congratulations to both of you, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much and welcome aboard. The next item on the agenda is elected chair or vice chair for the ensuing year. Good nominations for the chairperson. I would like to nominate Mallory Cook as the chair.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of, this be a Zoom, we have to do a roll call, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of electing Mallory Cook Chair for the ensuing year. We'll start with Mallory.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jack, yes. That motion passes five zero. Congratulations Mallory for doing our chair.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just do the other thing, Vice Chair for the ensuing year.
I move, or I motion that we elect Jack Kurekis as the Vice Chair.
Any other nominations? So we'll go through the roll again, all those in favor of Jack Kurekis as the Vice Chair for the ensuing year. Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so I think what we'll do is we'll just switch chairs.
Oh, we can stay like this for this, next week.
Okay.
I'm trying to be efficient here.
Oh, right, right.
Um, all right, so just before we move on, I just want to say thank you to the council for electing me as chair. This is gonna be new for all of us, new for myself. I'm nervous, I'm excited, and I really just more than anything ask for grace from all of you guys because inevitably I will stumble, I will do the wrong thing. Because I'm human, so I just ask for that. And, you know, I think Jack has a ton of kind of institutional knowledge and so, and Barbara as well. So if we're kind of proceeding with things and I haven't gathered the appropriate level of specificity for a motion, for example, or I'm missing something, please, please, please jump in and let me know that I'm missing something. I appreciate that. And, yeah, thank you. All right, so moving on, we need to adopt our meeting rules for the ensuing year as well. And I'm gonna be honest, you don't have any supporting material for this, what is the? I don't even know.
I have a suggested motion. Pursuant to the Town Charter Article Two, Section Eight Rules Procedure, I move to reaffirm the rules of the council as written in the Administrative Code, Chapter Three, Article One, Town Council, Section Three Dash Seventeen, Rules of the Council.
Thank you.
Second.
We have motion and a second, does anyone have any questions or discussion on this?
No, for Jeff and Jessica, in, in the code book, or it should be online as well, but in the code book, under the Administrative Code piece, there are the rules of the council. And that's, that basically is our guideline to, to proceed and help keep us organized. So it's, it's in that three dash seventeen, is where it's all listed out, is probably thirty different topics in there.
Great, all right, all those in favor of adopting the meeting rules for the ensuing year? Jack?
Hi.
This is new, John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we need to sign a policy for the treasurer's disbursement warrants and employee wages and benefits. And Jack, do you happen to have that handy as well?
Yes, what we do annually is to reaffirm the policy for either the Chair or the Vice Chair to sign the payroll warrants that are prepared every week. Our employees get paid every week and our regular warrants for expenses don't come to our table in every two weeks. So in the interim, we need to sign off on the payroll warrants. And this motion would be to authorize the Chair or the Vice Chair to come in and sign those, those warrants. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, start with Jeff.
Hi.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mallory votes yes. I'm the only non-J.
Non-J.
All right, so moving on to the approving our minutes from the twenty sixth of October. One thing I would like to suggest, as it begins to be meeting minutes going forward, I'm curious if anyone disagrees. So we usually make a motion and then a second, and then we discuss any changes, and then we end up amending the motion and making a new motion. Can we just have the discussion of what needs to be edited prior to making a motion? Is there any concerns with that?
I have none.
Okay. All right, so I, I'd like to do that going forward, bring up the top.
There's a lot of motioning.
Yeah, we can talk about whatever needs to be adjusted and then motion accordingly. On, so with that, I do have, we did receive a note from Julie, I'm forgetting her last name, forgive me, Julie, Julie Meneely, Meneely. She spoke at our meeting on October twenty sixth. And she had reached out to us asking for us to just add a note to the minutes. I'm pulling up here real quick. She had mentioned that John, in under your counselor comments, and I'm gonna be honest, I had left the meeting at this point, so I don't know if you would send us a counselor comments or when she was speaking during the public comment section, but you had mentioned that maybe OT didn't evaluate the speed limits in twenty eighteen, and it might be a good idea to contact them for a reevaluation of speed limits.
It was under counselor comments.
Can we just add that to John's section for their meetings, the minutes on the twenty sixth? All right, a motion is in order.
I move to to accept the, the minutes of October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one as amended, second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jeff?
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Mallory votes yes, minutes from October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one are approved. Moving on to signing the treasurer's warrants.
Adam Chair, I move we sign the treasurer's warrant. Eight hundred sixty nine thousand four hundred fifty one dollars and fifty four cents dated eleven four two thousand twenty one, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
It doesn't for the school, can I have some mention?
Questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving, sorry, for signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye, Jeff?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Yes.
Mallory votes yes. We'll sign the treasurer's warrant later, do you need? No reports and presentations tonight? Um, public comment, does anyone on Zoom, if there's no one in the room, have anything to talk about that is not on the agenda? Yep, moving on. Come in.
For the empty on the highway building, still in hold until this Friday, weather permitting, the middle roof will be put on. The new blinking crosswalk sign for, on Route Four by Goodman Street, has been, the order's been placed, and we are just waiting on DigSafe to come check the area, and then we can get it installed later after that. In the last meeting, traffic was a big subject, and I just wanted everyone to be aware that the, the police chief and I talk often, and he is fully aware of all the traffic complaints, and he is staying on top of them. He keeps a list of all the traffic complaints, and the officers that are on duty will address them as time allows. But a piece of good news on that is, on Monday, we have two part-time officers starting. So hopefully that will help with some of the traffic issues.
Excellent.
Yeah. We have an opening for the transfer station manager. Unfortunately, Mike Burns, who has been running the transfer station very well, I might add, is leaving us at the end of the month. So we have to add up there. And Tim Hellerin, our soon-to-be new manager, did come spend the day with me last Wednesday, and will be spending one day a week to become more familiar with the staff and everything that's going on in town before he becomes full-time in December.
Can I jump in?
Of course.
Tim, how about so? Um, we did just codify our meeting minutes from October twenty sixth, is when, which is when we had appointed Tim to be our new town manager. So it would be appropriate now for us to make a, I call it a press release on our website. I did ask Tim to put together a little bit of a blurb, kind of introducing himself, that will be posted for our website, and I'll make sure you got that, of course. And we'll make sure that that gets posted to the website as well as the email communication checking the box. And so that will be happening, and I think we will, as a council, certainly be suggesting to Tim, meet the manager type of session at some point, but just as a reminder to everybody, he's not starting with us until December first. So that would likely happen after that thing.
Another big item on my desk and obviously in the news right now is the COVID shot mandate that everybody's talking about. We do have some staff that is not vaccinated, and I'm doing as much research as I can to make sure I give all the staff all the options that are available to us. I'm actually do have a webinar tomorrow for more guidance in state of main firm players. And we are also planning on doing a vaccine clinic for the employees if there's nothing just, so we're looking into that. This afternoon, Jay and I met with Maine DOT about the traffic light that we all want on Route Two Thirty Six with Pumpkin Town and Marshwood. And Maine DOT did actually do a traffic study on Thursday, October fourteenth, for twenty-four hours. And we are only at about fifty percent of the volume needed to warrant a traffic light. I know. There are nine different studies that they do, from traffic volume to the number of crashes, to how many people turn left at the intersection on each side, as well as many others. So the traffic would have to double almost for it to be the warrant on the traffic for them to add a light at this time. And their concern about adding a light at this time with the high speed limit of fifty-five is that they're afraid there's actually gonna be more accidents of people getting rear-ended. So that's concerned. They also said the last traffic study that they did in two thousand fourteen showed higher traffic than the one that they just did in October. So unfortunately, that traffic light is off the table for the time being. I know that is gonna sadden a lot of us, but at least we know where we stand with MDOT on this particular issue.
I'm, so, like, I'm just wondering, like, Thursdays are late start days for the high school. So, for example, like, my daughter takes the bus every day, but I, there are so many kids that she goes to school with that only take the bus on Thursdays because if they can sleep in and they go in later. So all of those parents are not shuttling their kids to the high school on Thursday morning. I, I don't know, it's just like a, a little piece, like I'm just trying to strand for some justification for that.
I completely understand too. And I hate to say it, but the traffic study, I mean, the crash study part of it was five accidents at the intersection within twelve months. To be realistic, since we've moved road around, we've only had since September a full capacity at that intersection. So we don't even have a full twelve months to look at at that piece of it. I don't want that to have to be the reason why. Obviously, we don't want anyone to get hurt or have any crash at all, but all we have to do is meet one of the nine criteria, and they would allow a traffic light. And they did say that most of the, most of the traffic going in and out of there is the school. You know, they had their peak hours, obviously, when they're eight to nine in the morning and two to three in the afternoon. And then the peak hours for Pumpkin Town were from nine to ten in the morning and then seven to eight in the evening. So, you know, they recognize all those moving parts, but, you know, the school is the most traffic. And until the industrial park really ramps up and gets going, to add that much extra traffic, it, it might take a little while.
Do you have any idea, like, how close we were to marking any of the nine?
We're at fifty percent when it comes to the traffic volume. So, yeah, we, we asked that, like, you know, how close were we?
How much were we?
Well, yeah, that's it. And they were actually, and one of the gentleman was really nice, and he really explained a lot of those different studies and what has to happen for us to get to a point where we may be able to ask again. Or if we were to do a study on our own, it's only about three thousand dollars if it came to the point where we thought it was a big enough change, you know, to take that next step. So.
If I may?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, just verify, so right now, the current traffic study says that the state would not pay for a traffic light in that position. It's not, there's nothing against the town funding a light in that position if the town found it necessary, is that correct?
No, because it's a state road, Two Thirty Six, we have the money in a bank account sitting there to pay for it. That's not the issue. We anticipated being able to come to this point. But unfortunately, the traffic is just not, it doesn't warrant a light according to the state. And there's also, in fiscal year twenty-four, it looks like we may even be able as a town to take over the road, which means we just have to have more staff and take care of more roads. I asked the question, if it becomes in the town, can we make that decision? And we cannot, it still falls in their hands to make that decision, to put in a traffic light. He said, you can put a traffic light up, we just won't allow you to turn it on. It still won't, though, not gonna help.
Okay.
Their, their role.
Right, it's their role.
And so that would be the same for in downtown then as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But the traffic study, you wasn't done downtown, it's just done at the.
Nope.
Just done at that intersection.
Exactly.
The MDOT has already approved one at the intersection of Route Four and Two Thirty.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Maybe else? All right, moving on to unfinished business, number one, we have a comp plan update. And Jack, I'm going to let you.
He went ahead and drafted a request for proposals, and I believe it's in the sporting documents online for this meeting. And so that's available for comments that we have. I shared it with Bill Straub, Chair of Planning Board, and he suggested that thought the overall document was, was good, but his comments were asked for more specific info on key personnel and their experience. Specifically asked for descriptions of similar projects, asked for three references with contact information, and extend the date to some metals, a week or two. When this was drafted on, on November third, I, I inserted December first as a respondent date, but that's a placeholder. So depending on when we prepare a final draft, we'll adjust the, it should be at least three weeks.
And with the holidays and everything.
Yeah, it should, so that will push things back in December a bit, as far as when, when we'll get responses. So basically, the, the draft is there for, for moment, and and it's, it's crafted so that we divided it up into, into four phases. And the first phase is the existing plan is adopted by the time of two thousand eight incorporates information derived from the two thousand U.S. Census. It needs appropriate revisions to reflect the current two thousand twenty census data. That's a barely targeted piece of work that, that we can, we can, you know, it's, it's pretty objective. It's not, it's not a lot of subjectivity in terms of global strategy, so that's what it's about. And then the other is to conduct a town, phase two is to conduct a townwide resident survey covering the various planned sections and topics. Survey will inform the town council, planning wood staff, and ad hoc committees in developing goals and strategy in the updated plan. Again, that's a fundamental piece of work that needs to be done. The last two comprehensive plans that we did, we got responses in twenty-two percent, twenty-six percent range, and, which is tremendous in terms of statistically being able to formulate policy. A statistically valid response for a targeted audience like is six percent. So we were four times that in terms of, so you can go ahead with confidence, it's not just this group or other, other volunteers who are working on the plan. This is an opportunity for the entire town to chime in and basically give a weighted average of what the town feels is important. Last two times we did the survey, public safety was number one. That, that's not a surprise why people pay their taxes and what their interest is, and then the schools follow and, and the rest. But then there's other opportunities for, for weighting various topics, and it's all good information to, to craft a, a plan moving ahead. So following that, phase three is, is interaction with the ad hoc committees and providing guidance as needed to keep the process moving ahead, targeting the specific assigned tasks for the committees. And phase four is preliminary final draft presentation to the town at public hearings and to help prepare for adoption of new plan. The, the fee proposal will only be for items, phases one and two. Then, as we get to know the consultant a little bit better, we can formulate that mutually so that we can grow the fee schedule and budget that. Hopefully by, you know, getting to the, hopefully the two thousand twenty-three budget cycle. Yeah, so, so that's where we are. So with Bill's edits, I, I think we're pretty close to, but again, it's, it's a, it's a live document, it's open for any, any comments that the council moves to make. I also got some advice about how to advertise this, and there's a Northern New England chapter, the American Planning Association. And they represent planners in Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. And they have, it's probably their website a place to post RFPs. So we'll be able to get the request out to the targeted audience. As a matter of fact, the, the Maine Planning Association belongs to that, and they use that as for their advertising, et cetera. So, so we've got all three states covered, and so that would be the, I don't know of any other, any other appropriate place to advertise.
Does anyone else in the council have any questions or comments? I think our next piece of action would be at our next meeting. I think our next um, piece of action would be at our next meeting to add an agenda item to vote as a council to finalize this and distribute.
I had one other note. If we're not gonna actually get started on this until calendar twenty twenty-two, should we call it twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, that was my mistake.
Okay.
I just started this November, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it'll probably be quite a process anyway, so.
Yeah.
Well, like last time around, we were two thousand and three, two thousand and four. Again, this this was five twelve two thousand and eight.
Any else, any questions, guys? Anyone from the public? All right, well, we'll move on to, I'm gonna go to number two, medical marijuana caregiver licensing. I know at our last meeting, uh, we briefly talked about this, cause Jack, you were preparing um, a draft ordinance for this topic, and I know that you sent that out to the council. Not too long ago, I haven't had a chance to review it. I'm pretty sure everyone.
One hour and five forty-eight.
Yeah. I received it at five fifty, so.
I got it in the parking lot at five fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, without a deadline, I think it's done, right?
Yeah.
So so anyway, that's uh, uh, again, it's a draft, uh, included some some language from Windham and tailored it to us. And also I found, as I mentioned last meeting, the turner was was helpful. Uh, so that's uh, something that that um, bit to the side, you know, what we we in the last term, there was a charge created for the planning board to to start uh, reviewing that and going through that process of of review. And um, let's see. Under um, beyond purpose and authority and administration, you you're operating requirements are uh, there's there's a bunch of things I think that need to be filled in, and that's, you know, whether I want to consider uh, lighting requirements, uh, parking on street, off street, uh, they, you know, you want to require that signage. External facing window displays, lighting on lit or unlit wall signage, I'm I'm suggesting those be prohibited. House operation, again, these are suggested eight A M, eight P M, uh, provisions for rent, loyering on premises, and uh, security, I'm not an expert on security, um, all I I ran on that was lockable doors and windows and serve by an alarm system. But again, those are, in addition to having fixed location, displaying the license, ventilation, waste disposal, general comments about medical marijuana, ration key, give a show me to all operating other requirements prevailing of prevailing state and local law, and notification of change in business operations. So um, again, there's some things that you want, and it's a draft, it's uh, we can redo it.
Yeah, I feel like it would be, I I obviously wanna like review this in detail to have a chance to, but I was sort of thinking it might, it would be appropriate for us to have a workshop next. Um, and given that the the bulk of this is, like, in the past, when we put together a charge for the planning board, we've really started with nothing. You know, like we've just sort of said, we'd like.
That's why I wanted to do this.
Yeah, and so I feel like if we had almost like a joint workshop with planning board and the town council to review this, I think that would be a good next step.
True.
Any other concerns or questions from anyone on that? Okay, so our next um, kind of action, I guess, on this item would be to um, post a workshop with the planning board and the town council. For the council, I don't know if um, trying to think of what would be a good time, I don't know if that would ever be available to me next Tuesday, trying to keep with our normal schedule, assuming the planning board is available. That would be sixteen.
I'm fine, I won't.
Jessica and uh, I'm Jessica and Jeff. I'm gonna call at some point. Um, can you guys meet next Tuesday?
I I have a conflict next Tuesday. Next next Wednesday, I could probably do it though.
That's a regular planning board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We'll wait till the thirtieth.
No, it's not, it's not a regular planning board meeting. The next planning board meeting is the seventeenth.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what you're suggesting, Hershey, was this that Wednesday, this.
That's what you're saying?
What if we plan on our next council meeting is the twenty-third, or do we plan on the thirtieth?
Yeah. That works for me. Thank you.
Since you're here, do you think that'd be a good plan, Ben?
The thirtieth? Yeah, I I mean, I'm free. I don't know about anybody else, but I I could be there.
I can reach out to everybody.
It's good notice.
Um, okay, so we'll plan for the thirtieth to have that workshop, and tomorrow I can reach out to the other planning board members. Uh, or or something, or I can reach out to any, we'll we'll get it sorted out.
Yeah, I can do that too.
Okay.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, November thirtieth. Topic of conversation will be um, medical marijuana caregiver licensing, and we'll be reviewing the ordinance that Jeff, Jack drafted, and we'll make sure that everyone in the planning board and the council have that.
It's gonna be a great year.
All of these J's, I'm I'm gonna, no, no. Um, anyone from the public have any questions or comments on medical marijuana caregiver licensing? No? All right, moving on, new business. Number one, action on appointment to the conservation commission. So earlier this evening, um, Jack, John, and I interviewed um, Laura Eaton for the conservation committee. She's definitely interested.
I have a chair, based on her qualifications, I move that we appoint uh, Laura Eaton to a term on the conservation commission, uh, expiring on six thirty two thousand and twenty-three. Second.
Your motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, no discussion. All those in favor of appointing Laura to the conservation commission? Yeah?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mallory votes yes. Um, thank you, Laura, um, for your willingness to serve on the conservation committee. Barbara Hopkins, I see you have her hand up. Are you there? We can't hear you, Barbara.
Promotional.
Hear me? How's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, on the licensing, will there be any attempt outreach to the citizenry to ask them about the um, the draft ordinance and comments prior to the hearing, prior to the public hearing?
So we haven't yet scheduled a public hearing. We're just hosting a workshop um, for the planning board and the town council to review the draft. There certainly will be a public hearing at some point after that.
I understand that, but what I'm asking is, will there be an attempt to outreach to the community on um, input on the registered caregiver licensing?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Uh, that's that's why we're discussing it right now, Barbara. I will making this uh, a public announcement of the draft. And uh, the, I believe it is in supporting documents, isn't it?
No.
Not, not, oh, it's too many.
That's today.
So it'll be posted, and um, and so if if someone wishes to opine on various aspects of it, to critique it, I I think it's appropriate to to submit a um, a written.
So then my understanding is that the council itself won't make an attempt to bring this to the community, but that those who are present right now have to bring it to the community.
We will be making it available on our website as part of the supporting documents for this meeting, and those who want to review it are able to and are able to submit us feedback in whatever way they would like, and we'll take that into account in our workshop and and future sessions.
Will, when it is posted, will that announcement go out to the people who have registered to get notified?
We can make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Again, I we we use our our public notices, we 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 post things on the website. I mean, it's, it it seems like it's it's over and above.
But to be fair, Jack, there have been a lot of things recently where that communication has not been going out. There's a box that needs to be checked in the process of posting things to the website that hasn't always been getting checked.
And I might add that not everyone is tech savvy. So, for example, a notice, I mean, I see a lot of other towns that put notices into the Sentinel. The Sentinel goes out to every household. People who are not on Facebook, who are not on the web, read the Sentinel. And that in and of itself would be another way to outreach to parts of the community that don't often get um, invited, if you will. They're just not there technologically.
Whenever there's a public hearing, it is always in the news. Yeah.
But again, the public hearing is is almost where things are done. I'm I'm talking about prior to that, that we're having the conversations about this, you know, and that you're welcome to come to the town council meetings and et cetera, that kind of thing. So it's a little bit more inviting. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. All right, um, moving back to new business, um, item number two, assessing agent's authority. So Jen, you, did you want to add anything here? I'm happy to kind of explain it to you.
Yeah, so um, on the form for Verna Sharp, who is our assessor, we had a amount down at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where the median household has radically changed over the last few years. I think that we need to move that along with the median household. So we wanted to raise that from two hundred and fifty thousand up to four hundred thousand for the assessed value of her to be able to do abatements and assessments. The second change in the form was to allow the assessor to grant identical abatement and supplemental. That would be just to change someone's name.
That's just like.
It it ends up being net effect zero to the bottom line. It just corrects an administrative error that may have been done prior to tax commitment. So those are the only two changes on the form from what it originally was.
For the for the benefit of Jessica and Jeff, the past, the town council council acting as the board of assessors reviewed everything, and the assessing agent simply provided us with information to act the board of assessors. And we found that where we have a state licensed assessor uh, working for us as the assessor's agent, uh, there were many of these lower value technical things that we felt were appropriate for the assessing agent to deal with. Uh, and we needed to create a uh, a ceiling in terms of what would rise to the level of bringing it to the board of assessors. Uh, and so that's what we brought with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed value. Not not that that would be the value of an abatement, but it would be the value of the property that there would be a supplemental or uh, an abated amount uh, according accordingly. Uh, also, any of these uh, relatively minor adjustments would be reported by the assessing agent to the town manager, and we'd be appraised to that, apprised of that monthly. So it keeps us informed as to what's going on, and uh, it basically allows the assessing agent to do the job more efficiently and serve the public more efficiently. That's what the background is.
And I'm sure I move that we sign and approve the updates as written in the document provided, which are sections A, the increased amount, and the addition of new section B.
Second.
Uh, your motion in the second. One just quick question, Dan. I'm assuming the initial, you might not even, I don't even know if you were here when this was, or it was originally, it was initially from a place, but I'm assuming the original two fifty was based on the median home price when we decided to do this, and then now things were shifting, so.
Right, so we just need to shift accordingly, so.
Okay. All right, um, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor of signing the updates to our arrangement with the with our assessing agents. Say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Mallory votes yes. You? Moving on to new business, our three town manager residency. So um, Tim Halloran is our new town manager effective December first, and he currently lives in Harrison, Maine, which is two hours or so from here, so not super commutable. Um, he's been looking for a place to live, and hopefully this is no surprise to anybody that finding that is challenging. Um, and so that kind of leads us to considering um, what other options might be available. And Jen, I know you guys have reached out to the, for legal counsel from Maine Municipal Association.
Correct.
Right, um, kind of looking at our charter in conjunction with state law, um, and it sounds like from Maine Municipal Association's perspective, given those two things that they they say that it's okay for us to allow Tim to live, most likely probably in New Hampshire. The only thing with this that I just wanted to make sure we're super clear on is I know we've sort of always said that, you know, the town manager is the treasurer and the tax collector, and that those two roles were really more of like the sticking point. Um, does anyone have any thoughts on that? Did you ever get a chance to review what um, Jen had sent over?
Yes, uh, we have an opinion from um, Rebecca, Rebecca McMahon, Staff Attorney for Legal Services, Department of Maine Municipal Association. And uh, she states that the town of South Berwick Charter provides that the town manager, quote, man may not be a resident of the town of South Berwick or of the state of Maine at the time of appointment, and provides in the next sentence that in addition to duties as town manager, shall be the road commissioner, tax collector, town treasurer, and agent of the overseers board. In my opinion, this language in the charter is sufficient to override the statutory residency requirement for any municipal official position that the town manager is required by charter to fill. So we do have a an opinion that will allow us to go ahead and do that. The uh, the housing situation is 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 severe. Uh, there's just not a lot of inventory out there for, either for for purchasing a home or for um, for finding rental, so um, it's kind of a sticking point.
Being a bordering state with Dover and Somersworth being, yeah, so close by.
Wrong.
And wrong, but having options.
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't have anything to start with this, other than I, you know, I think it's good that we have the opinion from MMA and.
Chair, in accordance with Maine State Law thirty tech A, M S R, M R S, twenty-five thirty-six, and in our charter, Article Three, Section One, we will allow our new town manager, Tim Halloran, to live in New Hampshire to meet his housing needs.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Looking passes five zero. Um, thank you all, that makes things like a little easier for play.
A little cheaper.
Um, all right, moving on to new business, uh, number four, essential employee COVID payout.
I have a motion. Yeah, uh, as resolved by the town council in October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, I move to sign and approve A R P A, pay for essential workplace, essential workers in accordance with the American Rescue Plan Act, and as uh, outlined in the town manager's recommendation of November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, second.
Your motion in the second, any discussion?
Um, at the last meeting, we uh, we declared that uh, all the staff in South Berwick that's been showing up for uh, Declared that all the staff in South Burwick has been showing up for for work all through the the entire COVID. Problem, and deemed essential, which is a requirement of the federal law. And in order to make dispersments necessary, we need to declare them essential, and so that's resolved. And so the the schedule of payment is is outlined and. It's all deserved in recognition of the work performed by our staff. I mean, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry, I'm I'm at the airport, so I have people jumping in. So I appreciate what everybody did. I think it's a good thing. Just for clarification, it's for the one hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Is that the, that's the dollar amount total, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the further ARPA funds. Though that ends up being somewhere roughly around six hundred fifty thousand, something along that line, if I remember correctly from past.
In total, actually got increased to seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, something.
Yep.
So.
Great. And then just a question about the the remainder of the ARPA funds. I believe that other towns around the state are have, they're approaching it in different ways as far as their dispersal. Have we, as a council, decided how that's going to be discussed?
There's only four ways that we can spend the money. One is the essential workers, two is broadband, three is water and sewer infrastructure, three and four. So. We are working with the police and fire, a broadband communication plan. And then we were wanting to talk further with the water and sewer companies to see if they had any infrastructure needs.
Sewer has sewer has major infrastructure needs.
I have had to talk to Tom Harmon twice.
Okay, I I've talked to Mr. Harmon also.
Yes.
So that's something we're going to have to bring forward because sewer has a large need for new controllers and such.
So we have received half the money already. The other half will come late next summer.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want to derail the topic. I I'm, I think this is great. I just want, wasn't sure how, if we need to put it as a agenda item. To discuss the fur, you know, we have a lot of traffic things being brought up. I think that would be a a good option. But maybe for another art agenda item, and I don't know how to get that on the agenda, so.
We do have until twenty twenty-four to spend the money, just so we know, so there's not.
What did you say the four things were? Broadband, sewer?
Water, sewer, broadband, essential, essential tech.
So I would think that traffic, traffic was a fall into that category first. But I think this is sort of fitting, one of the things I was going to bring up leaders, I think we do need to schedule a workshop for the council to pull it together. What our priorities are going into the next budget cycle, bringing out a new town manager, and this can certainly be something that we discuss then. All right, any other questions on our discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Our votes yes. Motion passes five zero. All right, that wraps up all of our new business. Moving on to council comments, I'll just stick with my same order. Jeff?
Well, I'd like to offer congratulations to the March of Sox soccer team for winning the state championship of. I say so, and then moving on to to the state championship, that's quite a, quite an achievement. I'd like to recognize all the people involved with the soccer program for a job well done.
Ditto on that. Football's going this Friday, driving this Saturday, Friday night, this packer. Going going for states, so wishing them well. Looking forward to working with Jessica and Jeff. We got, I got an interesting two years left with you all. It should be fun. Hopefully, we can do it in person next time. And hope you feel better, Jessica, and that's all I got.
Okay. Jeff?
Thanks. Looking forward to starting this term, and I mentioned it to Barbara in person after the election. But just to, as we all know, it is amazing to watch the election process go through in this town. And it's a, it's a well-oiled machine that we have here. So very appreciative of everybody that participated and happy to be here. So thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jeff. Jessica?
I'd like to mirror kind of Jeff's comments. I'd also like to thank the veterans, looking forward to Veterans Day later this week. I know that we've got the flag brigade coming downtown and putting the full display up, I believe. Also wanted to make note that there is a a collection site at the police station for a group that's involved, the fallen outdoors, in helping to. They're doing a fun fundraiser to help feed homeless veterans. So I'm looking forward to being here on the council. I do have a breakthrough COVID case. I just also wanted to make make sure folks are, you know, just kind of staying safe out there. And looking forward to the future and contributing. Thanks.
I just want to say, welcome, Jeff and Jessica. We've got a lot of change going on with the new town manager, a very new council, a new chair. So I I'm excited about kind of what the future holds. And Jessica did bring up Veterans Day. We do have a ceremony at two outside here on Thursday. I unfortunately won't be able to make it, but just to let everyone know about that. And then I did mention this earlier, but I do think we need to schedule a workshop for us to come together and talk about our priorities going into the budget season and with Tim and stuff. And I personally feel like it would be good to do that once Tim comes on board. I was thinking, it's looking at our council's schedule in December. Our normal meetings are the fourteenth. The fourteenth is our standard meeting, so I was going to suggest the seventh, because Tim starts on the first officially with us. Or is Jen, is that the week where he's kind of double dipping?
He's, yeah, I can double check with him.
Okay.
And so if the seventh would work.
Okay. Does anyone have any concerns with December seventh, like six thirty for that? Okay, so we'll tentatively plan on the seventh, and if you can just check with him.
Can I speak a little soon for a lot of questions about budget for him?
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily totally.
Just to sync up with everybody.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Things to do.
Yeah, like, I mean, I think that it'd be good for us to have a a session with him anyways, coming on board, so we can just kind of.
Yep, okay, great.
So you'll check with him tomorrow when he's here.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
And that is all that I had.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn. Second?
All those in favor, say, raise your hand.
Say, raise your hand.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.